I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all councilmen are present except for Councilman Doyle. There's a copy of the Open Meetings Act, it's posted up on the wall there and is accessible to members of the public. First is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place all file, place on file all materials having bearing on this meeting. D, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on February 21st, 2023, as on file with the city clerk's office. E, approval of the minutes of the work session meeting on February 27th, 2023, as on file with the city clerk's office. Item F, approve the treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $206,548.49. Item G, approval of Boswell reported claims in the amount of $11,367.84. Item H, refer claim of Gary and Marjorie Higgins regarding damages to their personal property to the city attorney and the city insurance carrier for review and disposition. Item I, approval of manager application for Christopher C. Sick, license number D-122359, number D-122361, and D-122365 in connection with Casey's Retail Company doing business, Casey's General Store, number 1784, number 2702, and number 1744. Item J, award bid for the alley reconstruction, 8th and 9th Street, between Court and Markets, 2023 project to RL Team and Construction in the amount of $70,869.14 as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Award bid for the lift station number six improvements grinder manhole project, 2023 project two, Lammell Plumbing in the amount of $38,950 as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item L, award bid for the exterior building repairs, Beatrice Police Department project to Mid Continental Restoration Company Incorporated in the amount of $89,814. Item M, resolution number 7020, executing the agency application, agency agreement with Nebraska Department of Transportation Aeronautical Division for grant number 3-31-009, or 009-022-2023 to the Federal Aviation Administration to obtain federal assistance for the development of the Beatrice Municipal Airport. And item N, resolution number 7021, authorizing the city to submit an application for federal and/or state assistance from the 2022-2023 Site and Building Development Fund Grant Program for the Purpose of Site Development and Building Construction. Gentlemen, anything the council would like to have pulled off? I, as in Ida? Okay. All right.
I move that the items listed under the consent agenda with the exception of item I be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Your vote please. And that passes.
I move that item I be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second. The only reason I pulled it off is I don't like the way it's set up. Is there somebody from Casey's here? Is the guy that's making this application, is he in the audience? Yeah, they're never be able to make it. And so I just pulled it off to vote against it. I don't like the way that, I know they're checking all the boxes. They're doing what state statute requires of them. But they have one general manager and he has liquor license over half a dozen stores. And is that really how that's supposed to be done, have to monitor that? I don't think it is. I just pulled it off so I could vote against it.
Any further discussion? All right, gentlemen, your vote please. And that passes six with one no vote. Okay, there's no public hearings tonight. We'll move on to resolutions. Resolution number 7022, reporting the rehabilitation of the waterfall located at Chautauqua Park and committing $50,000 in in-kind services toward said rehabilitation.
I move the resolution number 7022 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Just as a bit of a background, again, we talked about this last time. The bid, or the quote that we received of about $85,000 plus some in-kind services. This, what this resolution does is says the city will commit $50,000 plus those in-kind services. We've already been talking with some other entities about donating some additional funds to make sure this project kind of moves forward. And so we brought it before you tonight for your approval, hopefully.
Yeah, just, just so the community understands, and so what happens is, is we've got a group that's interested in raising funds. Can't get them to, no, they don't have anyone that's willing to donate funds until they know that this is actually a city project. And so, and like I talked to them, everybody kind of wants to put in the last $10 on some projects. So this just gives us, gives us and this group a stepping stone to get started with this. And so I appreciate everybody's support, so that's it.
Is there any way we'll have this done this year?
One of the grants we're looking at would require it to be completed by the end of this calendar year. So yes.
From the public. All right, gentlemen, your vote please. And that passes seven zero. Next resolution is number 7023, authorizing the city engineer and the city administrator submit a request for highway access for the lot two Sony addition to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, to the state of Nebraska on behalf of Hydo Properties LLC.
I move the resolution number 7023 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Tobias?
Yeah, so a couple meetings ago, we approved the Sony addition replats. If you recall, that's out along Highway 136 and Scott Street. The Hydros are looking at some type of commercial development out in that area. And obviously it would benefit if they could get a highway access to Highway 136. And so in talking to the state, it seems to kind of work better if it comes from the city. And so the resolution before you deny it is basically asking the city council if we'd like to move forward having the city proceed with asking for that highway access point on behalf of the Hydros.
How long does it take to get a answer?
Not entirely sure. That'll kind of be the next question, what does the state want? My guess is there may be a traffic study requires some of those types of things. And so I don't know that it'll take weeks or months, but that's, we kind of got to get the ball rolling and have the request come this way.
Any other discussion? From the audience.
If, if this access goes in to the properties, the city will be responsible for curb and guttering and?
Those will all be conversations we have with developer to see how those costs are split.
And we haven't, we haven't talked.
We haven't talked about those yet because we don't know what the state's going to require. And so it seemed premature to have conversations about how we're splitting things when we don't know what's needed yet, so.
I think that this project is probably important. It's going to be an expensive project for the developer. And I think we want to take every opportunity we can to encourage development like this. And hopefully it'll be able to go like he wants it to with this part of the project.
Any other comments? All right, your vote please. That passes seven zero. Okay, that is the end of the resolutions, now the ordinances.
You have one more resolution. There's some folks here that might be upset if you skip over it.
Ah. Oh yeah, okay.
Sorry, Michael.
Resolution number 7024, entering into an agreement between the city and Main Street, Beatrice Incorporated, to provide funding to Main Street Beatrice Incorporated authorized by Nebraska Revised Statutes 13-315.
I move the resolution number 7024 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So what we propose to you is very similar to the funding agreement we had last year between the city and Main Street. This again would go during our fiscal year, so October 1st of '22 through September 30th of '23. It allows Main Street to accrue up to $30,000 in reimbursements from the city for a variety of different things. Kind of what we heard after last year's was some way to have some type of measurable goals in there. And so Michael and I kind of sat down, came up with a few things, and they're really kind of the same strategies Main Street's been working on all along, but just kind of articulated them a little bit clearer in this convert, in this particular contract. So what you see are four strategies laid out, and then each one of those strategies has measurements of success. So kind of some goals we're looking to aim for. And then in there, there's reimbursements built in. So those strategies are downtown properties, business development, retention, marketing, and then responsiveness. And so as an example, in the downtown business development, retention, one of the things that Main Street kind of lays out in there is they'll do some workshops, some training. And so as they do hold on a training, the contract calls, they get reimbursed $600. And we came up with those numbers by sitting down and looking through and seeing how many hours does it take for Michael and his staff to put on a particular project and doing some calculations and saying, well, the average one probably costs about $600 for them to put on. And so that's where we put these numbers together. But again, allowing some flexibility in there, hence the responsiveness, to say, hey, we also understand that things happen throughout the course of the year and allow Main Street to have some flexibility. So that's kind of the crux of the contract, and I'll let Michael talk about it.
Yes, Tobias, I think you described it pretty, pretty much, well, exactly the way it is. So appreciate you guys giving us the opportunity to be up here again. I hope that working, Main Street Beatrice, working with the city and the city council last year proved to be productive. We've certainly seen some good progress in some of the properties and want to continue trying to work through some of our challenges that we're facing as a community and as a downtown. And this certainly helps us be a partner to our businesses, to our property owners, and to you guys and the residents as we, we continue to try to improve Beatrice. So I don't know what questions you guys might have. As Tobias said, this is the same strategies, just trying to make it a little bit more black and white as far as how that is working and open to, I guess, what questions you guys may have.
Michael, I think, I mean, to start off with, I'm, I think you and Tobias have came with, actually because of more definition, and that was some of the concerns last year. So I appreciate how this is written, at least from my perspective. Well, thank you.
I don't, I don't know if this is a question for Tobias or for Michael, but, and I know that it's not for this year because we're ending our budget in October, but we have a two-year budget. I'm not quite sure why they don't make a request for funding for two years instead of one.
Last year when we did the contracts, the direction I received was to do a one-year contract. And so that's what we put together. We're in the middle of a two-year budget right now. And so, you know, at the end of this, this particular contract, if the council wanted to do a two-year contract, we could certainly take that up at that time.
You understand that, Mike?
Yes. Our, our request was for a two-year, but, but that's at the start.
I would urge you to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, I think, I think you guys are doing a great job, you and the board of directors. You know, what you guys have put together for us based off of what we requested a while back. One of the things that you and I have chatted about even as late as this evening was showing me a measurement of success with an individual business. What I used was a social media, like a Facebook post, Facebook site. And it's, it's there, it's available. I, I manage one for a Beatrice area business and it has a, a thing on there. I'd just like to see the before and after, hey, we went in and helped them do this. Maybe the place doesn't even have a Facebook page, but they start one. You can measure exactly what's going on in your daily traffic, weekly, monthly, and yearly traffic, all off of that, that type of stuff. But I'd just like to see that example because then some of the other council members can see what, what's actually transpiring and what it's doing to help that business directly. So I know that there's business owners sitting amongst us right now that have Facebook pages and I visit them all the time to see what their specials are. And, but that's just a, a great way to, to show some.
As a quick point of clarity, and we have a spot, a couple spots in here where we're talking about bimonthly meetings. There are two ways to define bimonthly, either twice a month or every other month. In this capacity, we mean every other month. And so just to make sure you guys are clear on that, I, I don't know if we fully went over that, but I thought about that this evening.
I knew what you meant.
I think, Michael, the improvements that you guys made in, over our last contracts and some of the things maybe some council members was wondering about, I think you went above and beyond and, and went the extra mile to try to answer all the questions. And I think this contract allows you to latitude to do what you need to do and still is accountability to us as the person in the outfits giving you the money. My friend and fellow councilman Terry Doyle, I know he's put his heart and soul into a lot of projects with you. And I've only had with one, I think, that me and Terry tried to work with you on. We don't know if that'll be successful yet or not. But from my experience, you've done everything we've asked you to do. And I think you've taken a lot of strides from last year to this year, and I thank you for that.
Anybody from the audience? Seeing none, gentlemen, your vote please. And that passes seven zero.
Thank you.
And sorry for skipping you. Okay, we'll move on. I believe that's all the resolutions. We'll go on to the ordinances. There's one ordinance tonight, ordinance adding article XIX and sections 16 through 60 through 16 through 64 inclusive to chapter 16 of the Beatrice City Code regarding ATVs and UTVs.
I move that said ordinance be given number 23-6. The title there be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. So gentlemen, your vote please.
Got to have six votes.
Yep, got to have six votes, so it did not pass. Since that motion failed, is there a motion, Mike, to read?
I move that motion number 23-6 be read by title one time tonight.
Second.
Okay, now, now discussions.
So if we will, I'll just kind of set the table, then we'll let you guys take it from there.
Tobias?
Yeah. Sure, I sure can. So anytime we pass an ordinance, state statute says you either have to read it by number three times that night, which is usually what the council does. They suspend the rules, they pass it all one time. Or you have the option to read it by title on three separate readings. So tonight, obviously suspending the rules did not pass, and so we'll take it up by title the first time tonight. Assuming that passes tonight, it'll come back at the next council meeting for a second reading. And assume it passes there, it'll come back for a final third reading at the council meeting after that one. So still another way to kind of continue with the process, but just give us some opportunity to have some more discussion about it. So the, the ordinance that we have prepared for your review tonight, we have the definitions in there, I think we've talked about those enough times. I think everybody understands what those are. The next section we have in here, again, talks about being ATVs and UTVs being allowed to operate on city streets. And it lays in the same things that are in the state statute, really not much has changed there. One thing that we've added in is if it's an ATV, you got to wear a helmet. If it's a UTV, you have to have a helmet or a seatbelt. And then we require one rearview mirror, something different that's not in the state statute. We also state that a person shall not, you can't make some changes to the exhaust system and spark arrest or some of those things. You can't pull somebody around behind it. Sometimes you see kids like to go out with sleds or something like that. We make sure that's clear that you can't do, you're not allowed to do that one. And it says no three-wheelers. So those things are all not allowed under the, the ordinance that's being proposed to you tonight. Talk about locations where it's prohibited, not allowed anywhere on Highway 77. Not allowed on Highway 136 except Center Street to Second Street. So right around the West Court Street Bridge, an opportunity to kind of get over from one side of the town to another. Not allowed on trails, not allowed on sidewalks, not allowed in parks except on the hard surface. So you think a Hannibal is a park that obviously has some hard surface that they would be allowed to drive on there, but obviously not on the grass. We talked about crossing highways, I think we've talked about that enough times, it has to be perpendicular. And then we have two exceptions to this ordinance, one is parades. Obviously people use them during parades, we made that exception. And the other one is if you're removing snow in the downtown, you're allowed to drive on the sidewalk for that purpose. Well, any sidewalk, it doesn't say the downtown, but usually it's where we see them at. But you're allowed to use ATV on the sidewalk to remove snow immediately after a snow event. So that's what's been drafted for your review tonight.
We're going to start with the council with questions, and I think there's a few people that might want to express views one way or another. So I think we'll start with.
In the last couple of weeks, I've had quite a few people approach me either by email or phone call on this ordinance. Two weeks ago, when we discussed it, we were talking about maybe taking ATVs out of the, out of the ordinance and making it just UTVs. I see that didn't happen, that's a concern to me. These other concerns are what people brought forward to me. The bridge on 77, by Chautauqua Park, we're not allowed to cross that one, but we're going to allow them to be on the bridge on 136. Seems to be some confusion there, should be all or none.
Mike, before you move on, I'll, I'll answer that question for you. If you paid attention in the last meeting, the, that is a, it's an acceptable highway to drive on from Michael Jay's Corner or Jay's Corner to 24th Street. So that's why it's acceptable and not acceptable on 77.
We could allow it for, from, I think, Second Street to Center, just for.
Yeah, we, that's because the councilman asked me to restrict the use, and that's what I come up with. That way they have to take the first.
These are just.
Yeah, but I'm trying to explain why not on 77, if you let me finish. The Highway 77 from Dorsey Street to Market Street is the only part of 77 that is not controlled access highway according to the Department of Transportation. That's why they're not allowed down there.
It was also mentioned to me by some of the council members that if this, that if it go ahead and pass and it doesn't work out, we can just easily rescind the motion or the ordinance. I guess I would like to know what those parameters are that says it's not working. Is it based on tickets, accidents, complaints? You know, everyone here probably has a different opinion of what those parameters are. And I guess I would like to have some clarity on what that is. I had a constituent that emailed, I think all of us had concerns on the amount of insurance, liability insurance, uninsured motorists, and things like that. So that's probably something we need to look into. And, you know, we have one council member not here tonight, so I like it to have all council members when we do make this vote. I think that's important that everyone's represented. Also, finally, I just spent a lot of questions and opinions on this ordinance. I just want to slow it down and make sure everyone has an opportunity to voice their opinion from the public and everyone's heard and we do, you know, we do a fair ordinance and it's all done properly, so that's all I got.
So I've been on the council just over two years. This is the first time this has happened. We rush, supposedly rush everything else through the system. So now you bring it up, that's funny. I guess if we want to figure out how we're going to rescind this, I mean, how are we going to rescind motorcycles who get tickets on the streets in Beatrice? How are we going to rescind cars and trucks who get tickets in the street of Beatrice?
No, I was just.
I mean, yeah, yeah, I know.
Because it was me too.
Okay, I understand that. But I'll tell you, sorry, and that's what, this is the part that irritates a lot of the people who are in support of this. At 3:09 today, a guy called me who lives outside of the city limits of Beatrice. His first words out of his mouth was, I don't want to see somebody get killed. I said, well, that's a hell of a way to start the conversation, what are we talking about? And by the time we were done, this gentleman said he didn't support this ordinance when we started. He knew nothing about a UTV, knew nothing about an ATV, didn't know if it was classified as a motorcycle or a car. By the time we were done, he wanted to know where he could go buy one because he thinks it's a great idea. I mean, the ill-informed people who are voicing opinions is beyond belief these days. You know, I went and did almost a year of study before I ever brought this to the, to the city council. I have answered the question several times about insurance, it's right in the state statute. I think we've all been at the meetings, you've been present. It's simple, liability insurance, that's what the state statute calls for.
Based on the email I received, I saw.
Okay, well.
And I do think we, we really don't want to talk about our constituents as being ill-informed. I think there's some people that have legitimate.
I'm not saying everybody.
That has expressed them to me and others. So I think we have to be real careful when we start talking about a citizen being ill-informed.
Well, this one was, so.
Again, I just think we're going to be careful because everybody has a right for their opinion, whether they're for or against. So Rich, Rich had a question first here.
Well, I've got a few things. From the very beginning that this was brought up, I, I have brought up registration. That is not in this ordinance, and I understand that we can go back later and make the, the, for the fees and stuff, we can put it on that. I wanted it in this ordinance and it didn't get there. They need to come in, they need to register those vehicles, they need to register the, the identification. They need to show proof of insurance. And I think $25,000 is all that liability insurance is from the state. That's what, a bumper and a back, a taillight on these new cars, most of it. Anyway, you mentioned cars and motorcycles being taken off. Those are covered by the state, and I understand that the state is bringing up the ATVs and UTVs in the next year or two, but we're talking about now. So we have to make sure that between now and that time that the state puts down the mandatory requirements for this, that we are covered and we're covering the people who, who are running our roads. This is not a right, this is a, this is a privilege that the city and the citizens of this town is extending to the folks that have these vehicles. Yes, they can be rescinded. I wouldn't like to put a law in and then rescind it if we didn't have to. But uninformed, Bob brought that up. I'm uninformed, I couldn't tell you the difference between a UTV and an ATV. But that doesn't mean that we rush into it with, like Mike said. We need some time to take a look at this stuff as probably some of these people that don't know anything about ATVs and UTVs do. So right now, I want to, I want to, I've got some questions I want to be answered, especially that registration and, and being able to recognize who, who owns the thing. The, and maybe some kind of sticker on the back to where if some kid's driving it, 17-year-old, whatever, and, and some knucklehead's driving the thing and just hits somebody and takes off. We have to have a way to, to know who, who's responsible for it, so. That's all I got to say.
Councilman Kerr, I'll be happy to answer your questions on that. First of all, in order to have a class of driver's license in state Nebraska, you have to be 18. Okay?
Okay.
But you said 17-year-old kids, I just wanted to rectify that for you.
Well, let me tell you what happened to me this weekend.
I don't care what happened to you this weekend. No, because I'm, I'm not, it's my time, my floor.
Well, you interrupted my floor a while ago.
No, I wanted to tell you we're done.
You're awful excited and awful upset about this.
I've waited to tell you we're done, and the mayor pointed at me that it was my floor.
I'm done. You just lost your vote.
Well, I didn't lose a vote because you already voted no, and you told me that the other day, you were going to vote yes. That's right.
Go ahead.
So to answer your questions about registration, it was brought up before, and everybody that was sitting there said, we do need to have the registration, but we'd wait until after LB 66 was passed or not passed at the state legislature. So threatening me with no vote is not, not reasonable. So I don't understand how we come to these meetings. We, we talk about this stuff. Everybody's sitting here, except for Councilman Doyle and Councilman Escher, who was gone the last one, heard every one of the rules, every one of the stuff that was going to be in this ordinance the last time. If you've been at the meetings on Thursdays every now and then, we talked about it there. I met with the traffic committee. I made sure that I covered with the chief of police that I wanted registration on the back of them in case somebody would flee. So, I mean, I don't know what else I can answer for you. I've answered every part of the state statute. I got 14 rules that I could read off the top of my head because I've answered questions, all the phone calls and emails myself. So I don't know what else you're expecting.
Ted?
I can appreciate Mike wanting to slow it down a bit. It's obviously something that's got a lot of.
It's obviously something that's got a lot of energy to it, so, and this does give the council an opportunity to change these things. So, you can make amendments to it the next time we read it, and on the final reading, you can make amendments to change this. Mike, you said something about removing the ATVs, you wanna make amendment to it, you can do it then, you can do it in the next meeting in March, the first meeting in April. But, my last two things here. From the time my tenure on the council, it's incredibly difficult to rescind something once you've passed it. You're gonna have a, you're gonna have a large segment of the people that enjoy it or wanna use it, and it's hard to take that away from them, it's much, much harder to take away than it is to, once you've given it to them. And my last comment is this, so when it all boils down to this, when you make your final vote, when we all make our final vote in April, it'll be the first, it'll be the first meeting in April when the final vote's done, you just have to ask yourself this question, does this make our community and our roads safer, or does it make them less safe? And that's how you need to make that, that's how I'm going to make this determination, and that's what I would urge you to do as well.
And we're talking about, you know, these, and we haven't really talked about the size of them, but I wanna, I don't know how many people can see this, but this is a, I'll call it a scooter. This is legal to drive, you can license this, you can drive it on any street, that thing is small. I mean, I'm talking about where I'm sitting, it's about where it is. That's a UTV, that's a lot bigger, it's four wheels. You're gonna see this a lot easier than you're gonna see this. I have a lady in my neighborhood that rides one of these in the summertime. She's got her helmet on, you know, falls of real stuff, but it is hard to see, I have to watch real close. You also have bicycles, you know, that you gotta realize that are on the streets, they're hard to see. You know, okay, so here's an ATV, four-wheel, it's bigger. I mean, it's bigger than, here's another legalized vehicle, I know it's maybe hard to see for you see, but these vehicles are small that are legalized, that can ride anywhere. So, you know, when you talk about safety, I don't think we're gonna have such a problem with safety. I know people are worried about, you know, they're gonna hit us or something like that, but you gotta remember bicycles too, and now you got a lot of electric bikes, and even bikes that have gas motors on them that people are building here in town, right? You know, and, you know, they're gonna be harder to see than one of these. So I just want people to realize that, you know, the safety issue I don't think is as big as people think it, you know, the problem.
Mr. Mayor? Those two scooters that you held up, can you hold them up again? Did you do any research, are they required a 30-inch Dayglow flag by chance?
No.
I just wondered.
Yeah, and that was the other thing, I think, I'm glad you said that, because that's the other thing here, where these that are bigger require a flag on them, and if we pass that. These do not.
I have a question, Dwayne, on those scooters. Do they require a license?
Yes.
So they fall under the motorcycle? So they fall under what the state...
Right, yeah, but I'm talking about the size, you know, that's what I'm talking about, you know, because people are worried about seeing them and things like this.
But the state says they're legal because they're licensed and under the state.
You have to have, the wheels, the wheel size has to be over 14 inches. Well, that's not very big wheel size.
I agree, he wouldn't catch me on one of them.
No, anyway.
It probably wouldn't fit me.
Well, I think we had some pretty good input. I know there's a few people that would like to talk, either for or against, and I appreciate any time the public is here. I certainly would encourage somebody that would like to speak. I think, you know, as concisely as you could be to make your point, that would be great. And again, you know, if, let us have a little flavor of why you're here and what you're thinking. So, who would like to, from the public, start? I see Mr. Nelson approaching. And as usual, state your name and address, please.
James Nelson, 1025 North 6th Street, Beatrice. I appreciate the opportunity that you slow down for a change in approving the new ordinance. And yes, Mr. Frayland, it is unusual not to suspend the rules and do it all in one time, but when you do that, you do not allow the public to understand or to hear what you're considering, because unless the public requests a copy of the packet in advance, they don't know what's behind everything. So on occasion, it is a good thing to slow the system down, so that you can have discussion in public amongst yourselves, and so the public can provide input. I'm opposed to allowing ATVs and UTVs on our city streets. A month ago, you all sat here and discussed about changing one-way streets to two-way streets in the interest of safety. Market Street and Ella Street, truck routes? You can drive these on truck routes, can't you? And I understand that we have scooters and bicycles that are allowed on the city streets, but you are compounding the problem by putting ATVs and UTVs on our city streets. I ask the basic question, who's gonna drive an ATV or a UTV to go to the grocery store versus their car? Who's gonna drive an ATV or a UTV to their place of work versus their car? And I realize there's some people in town that do ride a scooter, probably not to the grocery store unless they're getting a mere gallon of milk, but they do ride them to work, and they do take bicycles to work, and there's a few, especially there's a couple at X-Mark that take electric bicycles to work. What's the purpose of allowing all-terrain vehicles that are designed for non-paid streets and utility vehicles that are designed for agricultural use, farm use, commercial use on our city streets? My sarcastic comment is, you would be permitting immature adults to now have a playground in our public streets, and I think that's unsafe.
Thank you. Okay, next, if anybody?
My name is Mitch Minkie, at 210 Granville Avenue. I'm opposed to this, for a number of the reasons that have already been brought by the city council and also the gentleman before me. Motorcycles and scooters need to have license plates. You need to have a license to drive them. You need to have training, you have to pass an exam for a motorcycle. You have to have insurance, talked about helmets, we talked a little bit about the size. Well, are you gonna allow an ATV, like a 110, on the streets? Are you gonna allow up to, I don't know what the biggest ATV there is? The picture that was shown of the UTV is one of the biggest ones out there, it's not one of the smaller ones. They're not, are they gonna have brake lights? Most ATVs don't. The smaller ones don't. They're gonna have blinkers. How many people remember to use your left hand to turn, make a blinker, to use the sign of what you're gonna turn? I can tell ya that as far as the gentleman before me, those tires on those vehicles are not made to drive on pavement of any kind. I have my son, 16-years-old, in Duett, Nebraska, because I, Duett, Wilbur were brought up at one of the previous meetings, riding alongside about a 12-year-old kid, smaller ATV. Kid turns in front of him, he takes evasive action like most of us would, put on the brakes and turn sharp, it flipped, landed on him. Those tires are not made for pavement. I was in Cortland, Nebraska about two weeks ago, block east of Highway 77. Guy was headed south, I was headed west. He had a stop sign. He was probably late twenties, I don't know if it was a dad, big brother, who it was. Two 68-year-old girls on each fender of that ATV, he ran the stop sign in front of me. When he went to cross Highway 77 in Cortland, Nebraska, he did this, did this, and went across 77 without stopping. You can't, I mean, councilman, somebody said, you know, stupid drivers. They're all over. If I, if we took a poll and said, "How many people do you think are," if you asked everybody in here how good of a driver they are, you'd probably get 80, 90, maybe 100% say, "I'm a good driver." You can't compare Duett and Wilbur, or Cortland, or to Beatrice. You can't. It's just not, comparing Beatrice to Omaha, you can't do it. They're allowed at, you know, Checkfest and different stuff like that, I get it. Are you gonna have a minimum age? Because on the ATVs, there are ages, no one under this amount, this age can drive it or whatever like that. I work for the post office, I'm a rural carrier. I drive from a half a mile on Osage to Sprague Road, a quarter mile into the Jefferson County line to two miles into Pawnee County line. I've worked in Wilbur, or excuse me, Duett, Crete, Hickman, Denton, Douglas, and Sterling, ran rural routes. So I don't just see people driving in Beatrice, I see them driving all over. And I can tell ya, close to three-quarters of the people run stop signs. Is it somebody else's fault if they don't obey the rules and they get in an accident? Yep, but I don't want that on my conscience. Working for the post office, if I have an accident that's not even my fault, I can get fired, because I'm supposed to be aware. I really don't need to watch out for ATVs and UTVs. I run Beatrice, the city of Beatrice, from country club out to Old Trail Park, high school to SCC. I've been on numerous streets. I've seen city, county, and state law enforcement not come to a complete stop, seen city vehicles not come to a complete stop, or stop halfway past. Coming down Lincoln Street, I can, I watch, I have to watch the people drive. I see them approaching the stop signs and going like this, then they see me, even with my amber light on, and they decide whether they're gonna stop and go. Bumpers out on the street when they decide to stop. Adding this to the previous person that was up here, it doesn't belong in Beatrice, it's not safe. They should not be on this paved streets of a town this size.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before the next person comes up, just to address a couple of things. One, it was brought up about taillights, they are required under state law, and two, minimum age, again, you have to have a Class O, which is, makes you at least 17, so, just to bring up, a couple of questions that you had there.
Alvin Slavniska, 310 South 21st Street. We talked about this a couple of weeks ago, I thought, what's the population of Columbus? I mean, this isn't Duett, this isn't Wilbur, this is Beatrice, Nebraska. Don't care about Cortland, care about Beatrice. Care about what's better for everybody here. I'm for it, it's up to you guys to decide on it, I know this. Whether you wanna rescind your vote or not, that's not up to me. I understand there's questions, a lot of questions to be answered yet or not, but it all comes down to, those scooters he had up there, they're legal on the interstate. Yes, they are, anything under 40 mile an hour is it...
It's 45 miles an hour, Vespa doesn't go that fast.
Yes, it does.
I'm not gonna argue with ya, I'm sorry. I spoke out, I was just talking, I'm not gonna argue with ya.
Mr. Peribanks, the ruckus he was holding up does do 45 mile an hour.
He showed two different ones, did he?
I'm not here to argue with ya, just stake your mind, I'm sorry. You can't take a Vespa, nobody in their right mind would take a Vespa on the interstate.
Well, who in their right mind would ride a Vespa to begin with? I mean, come on, let's think about this. But the ruckus does do 45 mile an hour. Are you saying that one's wrong? Because you can go right online on your phone right there and look up Honda's, they have the specs.
Not gonna argue with ya.
Well, you're the one that brought it up.
So we can move on to your other points.
The turn signals with the hands, if you don't have turn signals on a motorcycle, you gotta use them, you gotta use your hands. We can go in here with your electric bikes around town, that is a motorized vehicle, correct? Electric is motor, right? I see them on the bike trails, doesn't the bike trail say, "No motorized vehicles"? And we're going with the ATV on the street, they do have street-equipped tires, not all of them, but they do come with them. The ones that don't say right on the side, "Not meant for highway use." So there's a lot more that, once again, the people are not informed.
Thank you. Anybody else for tonight?
Margaret Hayth, 104 West Granville. And I do want to clarify something, when I spoke at the last meeting, and I gave my name and I said it rhymed with faith, I was not being a smart aleck, but I have found over the years that if you're, unless you're familiar with the name Hayth, a lot of people don't know how to spell it. So if I tell them faith, only you put an H on it, then they know how to spell it, so. Anyway, yeah, since the last meeting, I have talked to now over 50 people, and I've been encouraging everyone that I've talked to, and in fact, handed out papers with emails and phone numbers to call you, because I think one of the first things that I was completely amazed at is hardly anybody knew that this was even going to be presented, that you were even gonna vote on this issue. I think one heard it on the radio, and another one just had heard it through the grapevine or something. So, I kinda took it upon myself to start calling people, talking to people, and just to let them know this is going to happen, so please contact your councilman and tell them your opinion on this. So, I've sent two emails so far, and I think everybody but Mr. Kerr had received the last one, and I spoke with him today to kinda fill him in with what that email said.
By the way, I do have an email, and I'll make sure you get it.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, one thing I would like to ask is, I've gone back and reviewed the minutes from the February 20, February 6, excuse me, and February 21st meeting, and at that February 6 meeting, Mr. Barnard had asked our current police chief to come up and speak and give his opinion on it, and that's all good and well, but he's been a police chief here in town for what, about eight months? And he admitted he has come from a small town in Montana, this town being about half the size of Beatrice, and he really didn't think there would be an issue, but has anyone, has anyone spoken to Chief Lang, that was a police chief for 30 years, that really probably knows the traffic in Beatrice and the accidents? Because I think he would be a good resource to get his opinion on this. Also, at the February 6 meeting, Mr. Frayland had said that there were several other large communities, and all of our little communities around us are doing the same thing. Well, the traffic committee took the, did the investigation, and for cities, they said that those that allowed, or excuse me, I'm gonna start with the not allowed, either one, ATVs or UTVs, the four cities, every single one that does not allow either one of them, 7,000, 8,000, the only one that did was 10,000, and these are not allowing. So I mean, that's, Beatrice is, I looked up, up to 21 population, Beatrice is 12,209 people. So as far as those that allow only UTVs, not ATVs, and I do have the population of Columbus, it's 24,123, twice the size of Beatrice, but they only allow UTVs. So here are five cities that allow UTVs and ATVs that are larger than Beatrice. As far as those that allow both ATVs and UTVs, those four cities, we're talking 6,000 and 7,000, that's half the size of Beatrice. So I'm sure that they don't have nearly the traffic that we have here. Now, another thing, I looked up the demographics of Nebraska, they actually have 578... They actually have five hundred and seventy-eight cities in, in this state. Beatrice ranks fifteenth. I was surprised that it was that high up the list. Because I mean, I, I think of Beatrice as not a small community, I think of it as a, a larger, well, it's not as the Omaha and Lincoln, of course, but I mean, still, I, I think of Beatrice as being a progressive city. And I think it's trying to be. Look at the trails that you're putting in, and you've put in. The river access, the new elementary school, hosting the sporting events. And to me, and Michael Suthen can admit to this, how interested my husband and I are in re, in revitalizing the downtown. So to me, allowing ATVs and UTVs, I think that's kind of a step backwards. Because I have traveled a lot, and when I travel, if I go into a town and it's got ATVs running around, I think a small town. I don't think of an upcoming progressive city. And then I guess my final thought on this is, because of talking to these fifty-some people, and as I said in my email, I only found one, one, that absolutely said, oh yeah, I think we should do this. And he was from a small community in South Dakota. About everybody, oh, I guess I had another one that, uh, he thought they should, and boy, he started listing all these, um, regulations and rules that they could have. But so far in this ordinance, you're not coming up to what he thought that they should have. So, um, he would, he would say no, then they shouldn't be allowed. Anyway, because I, I found fifty-some, and no, and like I said, nobody, nobody's in favor of this. So if you vote yes, are you really voting according to what the people of Beatrice want? Or are you voting for what you want, or especially what Mr. Fraylin wants? And that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council? I am Dwayne Delosier. I live at nineteen hundred South Third, ever since eighty-seven. I have concerns about the liability of this type of vehicle. And if I should bump into someone, or anyone else does, are we dealing with a, would it be charged like a personal, and by hitting a person? Or am I hitting a vehicle? My concern is liability, not only for myself, but for the city of Beatrice. For the individual that was. Heavens hope that no one ever gets bumped with this vehicle. I also wonder, this was brought up, it seemed like a few years ago, about allowing these vehicles on the city streets. I hope you would look at this very seriously before you would vote for this ordinance. To me, it would enter into liabilities. Are you ready to absorb that and be treated that way? So I ask that you look at this ordinance and get the feeling of the community. The community says, yes, we'll go with that. But I feel that, especially in our area, which is on the edge of town, you know, in Belvedere area, we are not in favor of having ATVs, UTVs, driving on our streets. What does this, what does the State of Nebraska Department of Roads say about these vehicles? I think that should be checked out. I appreciate your time. I wish you would give this really some good, strong considerations as what would be the best for Beatrice, the city of Beatrice. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just a point of clarification, we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. This vote will be for reading the ordinance one time tonight?
Correct.
Is it a, is it a two-third, two-thirds majority, one-third? Is it a fifty-fifty?
Five votes. It takes a majority of the body, so since there are eight of you that are elected, it would take five of you to pass it.
What happens if it doesn't pass?
Then the ordinance is dead. It fails.
The ordinance fails altogether.
So no vote tonight would drop it?
Correct.
Bob. I appreciate all, everybody that come up and talk tonight. And Margaret, you made your point very well, as all the rest of you did that are against this. But I also know a couple of things. I've lived here for seventy-one years, and things like this can be put off and put off. And when you say that people don't know about it, I don't know how we get everybody that would be interested to know about this. If you don't, yeah, we have in the newspaper, it's on the city Facebook, on the webpage. It's on the radio, Bob, has his stuff on his radio program every week. So if somebody doesn't know about it, I don't know what we would do to make them know about it. And secondly, uh, I don't think, Jim, we're opening up to have a playground on our streets. Uh, I've had complaints from people, not complaints, but input from people who say, well, they're gonna tear the hell out of our parks. Well, guess what? They're already doing that. Go look at Riverside Park, it wasn't ATVs, it wasn't UTVs. Two full-size vehicles, one track within the other one, right through the dish, over the old swimming pool. They do that all the time. So I don't know how you fix anybody from being stupid or damaging city property, because if they really wanna do it, they're, they're already doing it. This isn't gonna add to that. You know, and we also see every summer, they put out signs all over town, I don't know who does it, beware, watch out for motorcycles, beware, they're everywhere. And they do that for a reason. Because Dave, you know how dangerous a motorcycle can be. I don't wanna bring anything up, but he's, he, he has experienced that himself. And so, uh, I just don't know where some of this goes. We can be for a lot, be against a lot of things, and we can also be for some things. And I have more people tell me that we never get anything done up here, because all we wanna do is talk about everything all the time. And I understand why we have to. But not everything has to be talked about clear into the next year, or whatever, we wanna do it. We could talk about this many more times, but I think at some point in time, we just need to do what we're gonna do. Thank you.
Councilman, Mayor. Mark Knoka, six forty-eight Overlook Lane, here in Beatrice. And I am for it. And we talked, I am all for all the safety that there can be. Last thing I wanna do is ride around in a UTV and think that I'm gonna get hurt. I don't wanna put myself out there and be subjected to any more dangers than if I am in my own vehicle on my truck. I don't think that's gonna happen. Everybody says, what hap, what happens if I hit them? What happens if, you know, I bump into them? Nobody said anything about a UTV hitting a vehicle. It's everybody else running in to the ATVs and UTVs. We talked about the liability. The liability is the same as a vehicle. I don't know what the minimum is, twenty-five hundred? Whatever the state decides, but it's the same as UTV. So if somebody gets their license and they want to get insurance, it's the same amount. Do you think that vehicle could do more damage than an ATV or UTV? I believe so. So if it's an UTV or an ATV, you know, it's, I'm all for being safe. I'm all for, you know, we gotta move forward with our thinking and allow new things to give it a try. We talked about the tires being unsafe. If you wanna make it restricted to where you have to have road tires in order to put them on the streets, then do it. The people that want to ride their ATVs and UTVs on the streets of Beatrice will do that. You know, there's, if, I understand that we cannot sit back, and, you know, Mr. Barnard brings up a good point. You can talk about it all the time, but if you just don't sit down and make the decision, it has to happen sometime or later. And I do not believe you are gonna put more people on the streets by putting ATVs and UTVs on them, because either they're gonna be driving their bicycles, motorcycles, cars, or whatever, and they use their ATVs or UTVs. And it's not putting any more people on the streets. Somebody else early said, well, how many people's gonna go to the grocery store with the UTV? I am. If it's allowed, yeah. Why not? I kinda like driving around, enjoying the day, and people like getting in their convertibles, driving around, go to the ice cream shop, things like that. So I just hope we just sit back and think about it, and just realize that, yes, there is danger in getting in the UTV or an ATV, but there's still the same dangers if you get into a vehicle. It doesn't change the dangers. People have to be aware, and if they're not aware, then where's our law enforcement to make sure that they are? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think we're, real quick.
Real quick. Tim, you were saying something about the state working on an ordinance. What, what is that gonna tell to you? Can you get a little more information on that?
It'll be sixty-six, just, um, requires everything to be registered, and then it would still apply to the same thing that we're talking about right now. So it's just a registration process and putting fees in there. So I do wanna, with everybody who came up to talk tonight, there's some good information there. Appreciate, Margaret, all your, all your work you're doing there. I did bring it before the city council, isn't just because I wanted it, it was brought to me by several members of the community, so. One other thing to point out, um, the entire state of South Dakota, you can ride anywhere and everywhere, except for state parks and the interstate. And you only have to be twelve years old. So I'm sure if a twelve-year-old can figure it out in South Dakota, seventeen, eighteen-year-old above can figure it out in Beatrice, Nebraska, a town of twelve thousand, nine hundred people.
All right, gentlemen. Thank you to everybody who spoke out, I appreciate it very much. So, for tonight, your vote, please.
And just so we're clear.
Whoa, 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 explain it first.
Yep. So we're clear. So we're voting on passing it one, or reading it one time tonight. If it passes, does not mean you can drive your ATV tomorrow. It means it comes back to another council meeting for a second vote in two weeks. If it fails tonight, then it, the, the ordinance is, is failed, and it has to be brought up at some future meeting for, to start the process over again. So a vote for it is to read it a second time two weeks from now. A vote against it is to end the, the discussion tonight, and no further comments.
Yeah, so just for, just so for, for clarification, you could actually just bring it back in the next meeting?
Right.
And start it over, and start at the first reading then?
Correct. So yes, i- if it failed tonight, i- if council and mayor so desire, they could bring it back to the next council meeting and, and start the process over again. That is correct. Or a month from now, or a year from now, or.
We understand. I wanted to make sure that you understand.
Everybody clear where, where we're, where we're at? All right then.
Right. Gentlemen, your vote, please. All right, that passes seven zero to continue to the next city council meeting. Thank you. Okay. What's that? Oh yeah, I'll announce that it has been read by title one time tonight. Okay. Now we'll move on to public forum. Is there anybody here for the public forum?
Jim Nelson, ten twenty-five North Sixth Street. I wanted to address Gary Barnard's question. You inform the public of what you're doing here by not suspending the rules, getting it in the newspaper of what you've just passed, so the public has an opportunity, after you've all discussed it in the public forum, to come back and provide you additional input. So I would encourage you not to constantly suspend your rules and read an ordinance by number only for three times, and have one shot at informing the public of changing the rules.
Thank you. Anybody else here for the public forum? If not, we'll move on to discussion and, and reports. Uh, tonight we have a great presentation from the Community Relations Overview. Amanda has done a good job on this, so. Not to put any pressure on you right away, you know.
You're gonna tell everybody who you are, right?
Absolutely, yeah. No pressure, thank you, Mayor. Amanda Coolman, Community Relations, and, uh, excited to just give you a really high-level overview of what this position entails. And a quick background on me, for those of you who may not know me. I am originally from Beatrice. My degree is in Business Administration and Marketing, and I've worked in a variety of fields, both in Nebraska as well as in Missouri. But for the last six years, I have been here with the city of Beatrice. And I was able to transition into this position kind of organically, so I'll talk a little bit more about how that came about as I go about the presentation. But, uh, if you take a look at the photo here, uh, you may not be able to make it out, but that's me on a rooftop with some firemen. And, uh, so they were doing a training exercise on a house that was set to be demolished, some roof ventilation there, and I showed up to get some video and some photos, and they said, hey, Amanda, you're gonna get some better shots up here on the roof with us, so I obliged, and I joined them up on the roof. So just an example of some of the things that I get to do that are unique to this position.
You fell for that.
What's, oh, I totally fell for it, yeah. All right. So the Community Relations position was created in 2021 to deliver a cohesive communication strategy across all city of Beatrice departments. And the mission is to get the right information to the right people at the right time, so that they can make the right decision. And to kind of extend on that a little bit, when I first started here, I was at the front desk. Uh, I was the general receptionist, so all of the phone calls came to me. And the phone was ringing quite a bit when I first started here. There were a variety of inquiries that came in every single day. And as we moved on and we implemented some of these community relations events and, and tools, the phone really doesn't ring very much anymore. And so I feel that we've given people the tools to find the information that they're looking for. So, that's the mission. And, uh, the vision is to be the official source of public information and promotional communications about the city as an organization, all of its departments, policies, programs, and events. So what would you say you do here? Simply put, I tell the city's story. And if you're not telling your story, someone else will. That's kinda one of my mantras. Um, and there's a photo of me doing just that. Uh, I have my muck boots, I have my headlamp, and someone from the Water Department loaned me their jacket, because I wore a white jacket that day. Uh, and I was about to go down into a water reservoir over on Fourth and Grant Street and get some photos and videos, and show the public a little behind-the-scenes of the water, uh, system here in our community. So as a government communicator, it's my privilege to promote what our organization provides to the community, represent the people who work to provide those services to the community, and I think it's really important to humanize government workers, and also educate the public about city operations and programs. An example of that would be the Clean City event. When I first started, the first day of Clean City, I logged over a hundred and fifty phone calls that day. People had a lot of questions, maybe they didn't understand the program very well. We had that information out in the utility bills, and maybe the format just wasn't digestible to the general public. And we've changed the way we communicate that program. There are utility bill inserts, we have it on our website, but we've moved into explaining a, a little bit more by video, by social media, and we use just a variety of ways to educate people about that program. And I know they do not get a hundred and fifty phone calls for Clean City anymore. So goal is to assure clarity, effectiveness, and high-quality standard for all publication and communications for city departments. So some of my responsibilities would be to maintain editorial and graphic standards for all City of Beatrice public information. Another word for this would be branding. So if you're driving down the street and you see the golden arches, you know exactly what that is. If you see someone who has a swoosh on their t-shirt, you know exactly what that is, and that's because of branding. They use the same elements consistently in their messaging, and so everyone will know what that is. So another goal of mine would be, if someone were to see a message from the city, whether that be in print, online, elsewhere, they're gonna know exactly right away that that is from the City of Beatrice, because we're gonna use our branding elements. These colors are the branded colors for the community. Before I came on board, we had Chamber Engage City, the schools, all on board, wanting to do a community branding project. And the organization that put that together gave us these colors. So anything that I create is gonna be within this color palette. Also, some images that you can associate with us. These are all the different logos that we have. There's the library logo. Stake Your Claim Beatrice, that is actually not the city's logo until the little gray city on Board of Public Works is under there. Stake Your Claim can be used by anyone here in Beatrice. We also have the Police Department's coin, the Mars logo, and then the Fire Department's patch. And another element of branding is font choice. Something that Aaron and I learned as we were going through and updating our city's website in 2020 is there are actually ADA accessible fonts, and it's very important that your website is ADA accessible. But font choice matters for a variety of reasons, and I just kind of have an example here for you. So here's a sentence that says, "I'll be waiting for you." It's in plain text. You probably don't get any certain sentiment from that font. Let's try it in a different font. "I'll be waiting for you." This one's a little cuter, right? You feel a little warm, fuzzy about this font. Maybe have a different annotation to it, and let's try it one more time. Now it's a threat, right? So that's why font choice matters. Another responsibility is to deliver, deliver public messaging and communication tools needed for sustained, positive public relations. The city uses a variety of communication tools to reach its many stakeholders, including residents, business owners, developers, and others. And the city relies on our stakeholders to seek out the tools they prefer to use to get details on news, events, programs, and more. So the first communication tool I'll talk about here is print. We use a variety of print. We use letters, and that's just correspondence sent citywide, or to select business or residences as needed. An example of that would be if we have a mill and overlay project coming up. James Burles will write a letter, he'll send it over to me to review, and then I will pull a list of everyone in, that lives on that project area, so they know we have a mill and overlay project. You can't park there during these days. Postcards. Best example of how we use postcards would be pet licensing. If you license your pet with us, it's renewable every year, at the beginning of the year, so we'll send a reminder postcard to everyone who licensed their pet the previous year, that it's time to come renew their license. There is an eternal, internal newsletter that I write, monthly employee newsletter. If you guys check your city emails, you've probably seen those. External newsletters. The first one is The Beat, and that one actually is fairly new. You may have seen that with your January utility bill. It's going to be a biannual newsletter that just has a variety of information about city happenings. We also have a Mars customer newsletter, and that goes out to any customer that does not get garbage billed on their utility bill. So that would be commercial customers here in town, and also the out-of-town customers that get separate Mars bills. And that just has information specifically related to the holiday collection schedule or yard waste. We have Great American Cleanup coming up, some of those things. And we do other flyers or utility bill inserts as needed. The example up on the slide is that waterline service materials inventory that we've been working on for a while. That was our first touch, trying to get people to report their material of their water service lines to us. And I think we're about seventy-five percent there, so we're getting close. Next communication, communications tool is digital. Of course, we have our website. It is updated regularly. There's calendar events as you scroll to the bottom, and there's always an alert message on the top of the page if there is something that is relevant and timely that we need to alert the public about. So that orange section you can see on the top of the website screenshot there, you can always click on that and go directly to the page that correlates with that information. Of course, we have job postings on our website, public bids, et cetera. We have a city blog. Each department head contributes to the city's blog on a biannual basis, so they're tasked with coming up with an article and talking about their department, and that's just another good way to be transparent and let the public know what they're doing. And we have a direct notification system, which is fairly new. But what's really nice is that if you opt in to receive notifications, you can receive text message, email, voice call, all based on your preference, and you choose the topics that you want to be notified about. So if you see the screenshot again, all you do is go to our homepage. There is an icon that says, "Receive Notifications." Click that. You sign up in the manner that you would like to receive the notifications. Channel one eighty-one, our city's official cable channel. So we have live broadcasts going on right now. We have city council and school board meetings, as well as local church services that get live broadcasted. The carousel is what you'll see most of the time on channel one eighty-one. Basically, it's mixed slides, video. It has information about community events, local weather, traffic cameras, general announcements, and of course, the music of KWBE. Re-broadcasts, that would be city council meetings. So tomorrow, I'm gonna go into my office, I'm gonna download this video, I'm going to caption it for ADA compliance, and then I'm going to upload it to YouTube. I'm gonna share it to our social media, and it's also going to rerun on channel one eighty-one sometime this next week. Ask the Mayor is another program that Doug is so kind to give me the audio every week, so I load that into a graphic and I caption it, and I put that out on our channels as well. And then we have other videos. Engage has a variety of videos that we run kind of randomly on channel one eighty-one, and we have other videos that get shared that I will rerun on channel one eighty-one, as long as they're relevant and timely, we will use them. And if you don't have cable, you can still watch channel one eighty-one on the live stream. You just go to our website, and the best way to find it is to type channel one eighty-one into the search bar in the homepage. It'll take you right there. So social media, we can kind of get deep in the weeds here, but I will just be brief about it. There's a phrase that if you do not exist on social media, you do not exist. And that might be a little bit extreme, but as a business or an organization, this is where people are getting their information. So if you're not putting your information in front of them in that format, good luck. We have several official pages. We have a large presence on Facebook. The City of Beatrice, Nebraska Municipal Government is our main page, so we have information about all departments on that page. And thank you to those of you who like, share, and comment on those. It does help engagement, and it helps that information move through the algorithm, and more people see it that way, so I appreciate that. Beatrice Fire and Rescue has a page. Beatrice Police Department has a page. The Library has a page, and the Water Park has a page. LinkedIn is fairly new to the city. We got on that just a couple of months ago, and like everyone else, we've kind of had some challenges recruiting and hiring positions. So we are on LinkedIn. That is specifically for job seekers and, and careers, so that's what that platform is about. We do have two Twitter pages. We have City of Beatrice, and we have Beatrice Public Library. They don't get a whole lot of engagement on Twitter right now, but we do have those pages out there, and they're available whenever we need to use them. And we also have YouTube, City of Beatrice NE on YouTube. So you can watch any of these meetings, Ask the Mayor, you can watch a variety of videos on YouTube whenever you'd like. And I tried to just post a mixture of informational posts, as well as just some fun, feel-good posts. One of them there is our Chautauqua Park sledding hill. I took a picture, and it was snowy, and I said, hey, we'd love to see pictures of your family enjoying Chautauqua Park, and we got lots of great pictures sent our way, so that was kind of fun. And I thought I would just give you a few examples of some of the stories I tell. This is an educational video. This was behind the scenes of the water reservoir. And this was in 2021.
That's where your drinking water stored. For your people watching that, that's where your drinking water stored.
All right, yes, so that was where I climbed down into that reservoir with the headlamp on, so that was kind of nerve-wracking going down there, but super fun and glad to share that with the community. And I have one more video here. We do have an opening in our Fire Department, accepting applications until March tenth. So Chief Dakey came to me and said, can we do a recruitment video? And of course, let's do that. This was a real call, by the way, when it came in while I was there.
They didn't invite you along?
Oh, they invited me, but this was a real call. We didn't stage it.
Yeah, that's my grandfather.
So I checked this morning, and that video had about three hundred views on YouTube, and it had over three thousand views on Facebook. So it's getting out there for sure. That's all I had for today. Do you have any questions for me?
Are you able to track, the traffic, like, to the, to the websites and the different ones, and kind of compare them to, like, say if you have a promotion going or something, to see which ones?
Absolutely. I have tools that give me analytics for the website. I can log in right now, and I can tell you how many people are on our website, where they're located, what kind of device they're on, what page of our website they're on. It, I have trackability, absolutely.
So like, they're looking at for building permits, if that's a hot, you can kind of tell which department's getting that?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
They know where I'm at.
Watching you, Rich.
Not me, I'm not on Facebook or any of that stuff.
So you don't exist?
What you're saying, Becky probably wishes I didn't.
We'll get you a Facebook page tomorrow.
Anyone else?
How's your mom and daddy?
Mom's doing well. Dad passed in eighteen.
Yes, I knew that. Rich.
It's okay. All right. Thank you.
And there's a good lesson. When you get, even though you pay your bill online, open up your water bill, because The Beat was really cool. It really, really, you did a very nice job with that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. The next regular city council meeting, it will be March twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven PM, in the business, or in this BPS Administrative Building Board room. Not sure how many city councils we're gonna have for March twenty-seventh, so there is a high probability we will not have a work session that night. With that, Mr. McLean?
I move the meeting be adjourned at eight twenty-five PM.
Second.
Your vote, please. And it passes, seven zero.